Mr. Homer.
How are you, sir?
I'm well, yourself?
Good.
It's good to see you at seven P M and at twelve thirty on a call.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All ready to go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our March third, two thousand twenty five, Denellen Borough Council meeting. We welcome you. Item number one on the agenda, which agendas are right up front, if you care to take one, is a call to order and arise for the pledge of allegiance. So please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united in the universal liberty of justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the reading of the sunshine statement and roll call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lawrence Dass.
This meeting of the Denellen Borough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of March third, two thousand twenty five was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in the Courier on January ninth, two thousand twenty five. And as a teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. And on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Solento.
Present.
Council President Sigmund.
Here.
Mrs. Albertson.
Here.
Mrs. Lance.
Here.
Mrs. Rios.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark noted absent.
Okay, item number three on the agenda this evening is a presentation by Ms. Sharon Roundtree, Denellen Special Project Advisor. She assists us on seeking efficiencies in our government as well as cost savings such as shared services. So tonight she'll be presenting on exploring the potential sale of Denell and sanitary sewer system. And the exploration and the process that we would do to accommodate that. So welcome, Sharon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. If I, if I talk like this, is it good enough?
Yeah.
Okay, no one's ever told me I'm too quiet. So if anybody's here, just let me know. So today, as the mayor said, I wanted to take a couple of minutes to, for the public's application, explain what the the idea of exploring a potential sale of the sewer system. A lot of times when, when this comes up in communities, people don't really know what it means. And I wanted to just take a few minutes to walk through that process. And I'm going to try. There we go. Okay, so why are we here? Through discussions, looking at the borough's budget, looking at where we stand. The idea has come up that we explore the potential of selling the sewer system. There is a resolution for the council's consideration tonight. The resolution does not obligate the borough to do anything, and I can't stress that enough. This, this resolution simply allows the borough to put out bids to see what responses it would get if it wanted to move forward. No decision will be made to move further without lots of evaluation from experts that have done this all over the state. And without a lot of additional public input. And no sale would happen unless it was voted for by the members of the public, and that won't happen until November. So this will be, if we continue down this path, one of many, many times that you will speak, see me over the next probably ten months and plus. To make sure that this process runs smoothly and that the borough gets all of the information that it needs and the public gets all of the information that it needs. And I just want to speak, I've worked with lots of different towns and your mayor and council really have stressed the importance of transparency and being open and honest with the public. And so that is our number one priority through this whole process, which is why I'm here tonight explaining what the steps would look like. So what does this exploration process mean for you? Right now, nothing. There's going to be no impacts on your sewer service. There has been no decision that has been made yet. The town does not, has not said, we are going to do this. They're just saying, maybe we'll look into the process. As I mentioned before, there are experts that we will engage in this process to make sure that any decisions that we do make are well thought out and we're looking at both the short term and most importantly, the long term. And as I mentioned before, again, this will be a vote by the residents, not a vote of the council at the end of the day. So why are we exploring this aging infrastructure? The current sewer system is old and it requires a lot of ongoing investment. And that investment is costly to the residents of Denellen. One of the things that we don't have on our side is economies of scale, towns one square mile. The equipment that you need just to maintain on a regular basis costs a lot of money, but you don't need it three hundred and sixty-five days a year. When you have a company that does this for many, many other communities, they're the truck that they may need that costs a million dollars for the borough of Denellen. They can spread that cost over several municipalities, and that's just one example. So the aging infrastructure and what investment the borough is going to have to continue to put in if you keep it. There's potential financial benefits for the sale. There'll be an upfront purchase price of it, which might be able to, to be used to offset some of the capital investment that the borough has already put forward. On this and other capital investments that either you have had or you are going to need. Rate stability for residents, going through this process, there's ways to ensure that there's stability and residents know what to expect. And then kind of going with the aging infrastructure is this long-term risk mitigation. If there's some major incident that happens, it can really put a huge financial burden on the municipality. Whereas, you know, a bigger company that does this all over the state and or country, that, that investment wouldn't be as impactful to them. So potential overall benefits pay off some of municipal debt, free up other funds that you're gonna, you would otherwise have to invest in your sewer system to pay for park improvements, road improvements, other capital expenses that you have coming up. There might be some economic development opportunities with businesses and organizations that want to come into town. And as I mentioned, risk, shifting some of that infrastructure maintenance and the risks associated with it to another, another entity. There's actually benefits to residents. One thing that's really, really important to remember is that rates are regulated by the New Jersey B P U. So a lot of times when, when these discussions start happening, some of the rumors that get out very quickly are, oh, your rates are going to explode. And anecdotally, and I know anecdotes don't mean everything, but this morning I was walking with a dear friend of mine. She doesn't work in government, she doesn't do this at all, and we were just talking about our days and I said I was coming here to do a presentation of potential sale of sewer. She lives in Long Hill Township, not very far away from here. And she goes, oh, she's like, we, you know, we did that about five years ago. I'm like, yeah, I do. I remember that you did that. I already know that you've done that five years ago. She goes, I remember all my friends were worried that the rates, we were bracing ourselves for our rates to just explode. She's like, we never saw any of that. She's like, and I, she educated herself and she saw what the aging infrastructure in her town was, and she was like, it was a really good decision for us. Good luck tonight, is what she said, but I just thought it was interesting. Literally, that happened to me today just because of the conversation. Despite what a lot of people think, it doesn't mean that your rates are just going to explode. And there's ways that we can put in our bid and our negotiations and throughout the process, some stabilization for a while. And then even in the future, if the B P U has to approve those. The economies of scale that I was mentioning before, a large customer base, when, when companies bid on these, they have thousands of millions of customers, hundreds of thousands, millions of customers, depending on, on which company it is. And they can help spread costs over a longer period of time, which is something that, you know, a smaller municipality like Denellen wouldn't have that opportunity to do. Additionally, they have systems in place to look at your system as a whole. They have equipment and processes to make sure that improvements are made on an ongoing basis. Whereas it might be a really big hit, even something as simple as like, that's cheap as a quarter million dollar investment for regular maintenance that the borough would have, wouldn't have as big of an impact on a larger company. And just the advanced technology, we have a great D P W department. I commend them. They're, they're amazing. But we don't have people that are just doing sewer, and it wouldn't make sense just because we have such a, we're a lean means team here. They have people that just do this for a living. And then the other benefit to residents is you just have a reliable service and quality. They're, they're better equipped to respond to incidents when and if they happen. And then there's very strict environmental standards that sometimes comes up as, as well. So I wanted to point that out. Again, it's still regulated by the B P U. So what happens next? What, where, what does this mean for us? I said, tonight is just a resolution that allows us to request bids. That would happen now, hopefully, and this is a very rough timetable. There are approximate dates. By the end of this month, we can get a bid package together and actually advertise it. There are a lot of strict regulations that need to happen while you're advertising that bid. It has to be published, just to ensure that you're getting it out to any company that might be interested in responding and you're making sure that you get the best possible bid. At the same time that we're doing that, we're working internally with our teams to make sure that we have an internal value on the system. And that's based on a lot of metrics that, that, that our, our financial advising experts will help us on. Our legal experts will help us on, will work with our engineers. So we have, we have a good idea of what to expect. Then we'd get bids sometime in mid-May, mid to late May. We will take the time to review them again with our expert team, financial advisor, legal team. And engineers and internally look at what they are, potentially have those conversations and work out what a deal would look like. Again, that's another stop point. So, so we can get to the end of this month, decide not to throw out the bids or not to put out the bids. We do put out the bids, we get the bids back, we look at the numbers and we say, this doesn't make sense. It's not a wise decision for the borough of Denellen. We can stop there. If we just, if we look and the numbers seem to make sense and we have the advice from the experts. We would present an ordinance to the council, with the council, the council would pass an ordinance to put this on as a ballot question. And then it would have to, just like every other ordinance, it would have to be introduced and it would have to have a second reading. There would be time for public comment then. If it goes, if we move to the next point of, okay, let's give this to the public, let's explain to the public what the options are, what the numbers look like. We would have until July or August through November, where we would provide, we would have to submit the questions to the county clerk in August. That's the due date by, by one act to get to the county clerk. We would provide information to the public. We'd have listening, listening sessions. We'd have pamphlets that you can go online and get more information. We'd show all of the numbers. Again, transparency is our goal on this. And then there'd be from August to November, that information will be available to all of the residents, and then there would be a referendum in November. If that, if then that passes, it's probably about an eight-month period until the actual sale goes through. I wanted to, to point out a couple of neighboring towns, this is how I knew that Long Hill Township had, had done that. They, they did theirs back in, I think, twenty twenty. They ended up getting twenty-three million dollars in, in the part of the deal that was struck. Twenty-three million dollars in investment to their system over a five-year period. And they had a five-year rate plan over the, over the implementation. So for a certain number of, of years, the, the, the rate was going to be stable and then it was going to increase. And that was all part of the deal that was struck. Like I said, the anecdotal story, apparently the residents seem to like it. Somerville, they are another one. They did theirs. They, they said they feel like they started doing it years ago, but twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is when it was passed. They had a seven-year rate plan. It was three years of no rate increases and then four years of specified increases. And they got about ten million dollars in investment in the, in the first ten years with part of the commitment. Another one, Bound Heart Down the Road in twenty twenty-one, they did theirs. They had eleven million dollars in investment over ten years and a five-year rate plan. And those are just some examples, so people know that, that the rates aren't going to immediately jump. There's some stability, that there is investment. I mean, for us to invest, even, even a little portion of what some of these towns got would, would make a really big impact on our budget. And so there, there's a lot of opportunity there. Again, I just want to stress the public's role in this whole process. There are going to be several hearings. There's going to be an information that is shared on the borough that, that just shows the numbers and the facts. And at the end of the day, the final decision rests with the voters of Denellen. It will be a public vote, or if we get that far, it would be a public vote in November to make the decision. Think that covers up some key takeaways, saying this again because I can't stress it enough. This is only the very first step and it does not obligate us to do anything. We are not committing to a sale. And that ultimately it's, it's on the public. And there's a lot of more, more information to come from here. That kind of covers what I wanted to, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, mayor, council you may have, or if you want to open it to the public, I'm happy to help them. I look forward to seeing if this is the best decision for the town, for the borough.
So for purposes related to our analysis, clearly after we R F B, they're going to give us their analysis. We're going to do our own appraisal. And that's also inclusive of what the cost of our improvements would be over a period of time and what rates would be able to support that on our end if we were to continue doing it, so we can make the best educated decision.
Absolutely. And just so everyone knows, we will do that. That will be not public information until after we get through this process. We don't want to tell, tell any potential bidders, oh, you only need to get to X number when they were going to really bid higher with nine number. So that information will all be done. It will be kept private until after the bids are received and after we do the full analysis. The other thing that I, I want to mention is that once we get to a point where we're talking with a potential buyer, an escrow account will be set up. And a lot of the costs that are associated with the professionals that we need in order to do this properly will be offset by that escrow account. Once we get to that point. Or if we get to that point, I should say.
Counsel.
You know, we want to make sure that we do it right. I, I've talked to other administrators that have done this. I personally have, have done a extra-long lease of a system, which doesn't really happen anymore. I've, I've talked to other experts and, and really making sure that you have a, a great team. And Denellen's lucky enough to have some really great companies that have done this for several, several municipalities. And so getting that expert advice and all of that information and the, you know, determining the age and the value of the system and potential future value is really important.
I mean, I think for transparency, we'll open the floor to the public. We just ask that you state your name and address, and then you can ask your question. Solely to this related matter, though. Yes, Mr. Locke.
Dave Locke, six forty-eight, Down River Road. Who develops the bid specification?
We will do that in concert with experts.
With experts.
Yes, yes. So we have a call scheduled for, I think, Wednesday. With our, our borough attorney, our bond attorney who has done this before in other communities, our financial advisors to go over the bid specification and what we are. Great question.
Thank you.
It's not something you do every day, and that's why you need the people that, that do do it.
Exactly. Put that on record, exactly.
Mr. Best.
Jeff Best, four oh one. Two questions. First of all, you mentioned that our D P W is waiting in sewer. Did we invite ourselves in Parsa?
No, and I believe a part of this process, Parsa remains the, the, the direct authority that would work on, on services. So we don't lose Parsa in this part, in this.
So they're still, they're still the ones doing the work.
Yeah.
So, so they. If we, if we, if we sell our sewer off, they're still going to be going to work.
The treatment of the wastewater goes through Parsa. The management and maintenance of the system is currently done by.
And that would be what would be.
But, and, and what, what if we, so we would then no longer manage the billing of the sewer or.
And the second question kind of relates to, as long as there are two resolution votes. One would have to do with a two-year sewer improvement fee in guarantee. What are those? How would those have any impact?
That's separate. That one is related to the Denellen Station project. So they're separate matters.
Okay, that's. Sewer that would be part, part of the sale or?
I'm not, I don't know that resolution.
Okay.
No, that, so no, it would be, I believe, in the grand scheme, but that resolution is basically set, from my understanding, the RAB, which is a bond that was taken out on the project for infrastructure improvements, mainly their pump station, the force main. And then, and the agreement we have between them that through payments, we offset some of that, that payment because there's also a general, sorry, general benefit to the public for that force main that goes through the town. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that there, the, the sewer improvements have been completed. So you'll see an ordinance on the agenda accepting the completed sewer improvements. And then there's two parts on the resolutions. One is the, because the sewer improvement has been completed. They're releasing the performance bond and replacing it with a two-year maintenance bond. So it all has to do with that, the construction and the completion of that project. So that's what.
Okay. Mr. Mosley.
Couple of questions. Does the cost benefit analysis include the cost of exploring the project? So let's take for example, you're exactly, come away with ten million, but it costs you X amount of, X amount of dollars. So you're not coming with a million, you're coming away with, you know, eight, eight minutes of the cost of, of course, of duty analysis, so what does that?
That's what I was referring to when I said that their escrow account that will be set up. So we do take the borough, I, transparency is important. The borough is taking risk in getting us to the point of accepting bid. That, that if we decide that we're not going with anything, then that, that cost would be incurred by the borough. But once you, you, the winning bid is selected, they set up an escrow account for the remainder of the process, which would cover those costs associated with the legal fees and the entity or fees and the financial advising fees associated with that stuff.
And a question, a silly question to that is, how do you fund the escrow?
That's funded by.
That's funded by whoever, yeah, whoever does, who responds to the R F B at the highest bid with the best services and qualities. They would fund the escrow. It's much like a developer, when they come in and we start negotiating on a project, they fund an escrow. So therefore, the professionals that we're using on our end, they get paid through those escrows that the developer is putting upfront, taking the risk to get a project done.
And obviously, the reason why a company would take this bid on is that they're looking at the potential of our future rates. Because in the business.
Absolutely.
So.
And again, that's a difference. So, so to that point, well, if it's gonna, they're gonna make money in the future for it, then what if we make money? They can do things at a much more discounted rate than we can because they service so many, so many households. They have the, they have this staff. They can do preventative maintenance that is prohibitive to us because of our size and of us. And so that's where that it's important to do the cost benefit analysis, to understand the value of our system, to understand the potential future rate. That's all part of what we do when we go through this process, to make sure that for us, the, the, the benefit is greater than, than the potential loss of sewer.
I think also to, to, to drive a point home is, we have, look, if we had a system that was upgraded to almost a hundred percent. I don't know if this would be the conversation. At the end of the day, the issue is, is we have over a hundred-year-old sewer utility system, okay? And so unfortunately, what that does come with is costs. And even though we've had Parsa for the past several years. The amount of improvements that we have made has not been able to keep up with what the actual improvements need system-wide. And so the cost to a small town, it's, as Sharon said, it's cost of economics of scales. Because the, the investments weren't made at a significant, as a significant scale over the past hundred years. Credit to my predecessor, Robert Cedar, he had the foresight of creating, getting involved with Parsa and creating sewer utility with the mayor and council at the time. And making sure that we had a funding source to make improvements over time, still. Current day, the, the, the rate in which we have to make improvements, especially with the D E P that's coming down. There's regulations that are coming down that are going to really force every town's hands. For towns such as ours, it's going to be difficult to maintain and keep up with that without directly impacting the taxpayer. So this is something we are exploring as, as a way to offset some debt clearly, which would then offset principal and interest, which helps taxpayers. But also have better quality of services that may be one of these major companies that does this. We're not, we're not, you know, we're municipalities, we're not in the business of sanitary, so sanitation. So it's, it's, like I said, it's an aging system, the economics of scales, it's, it's going to come down with a hammer if, if we don't explore options such as this.
And just food for thought, we've had spent one point two million dollars in the last four years on sewer reasons. And that's fair. Because of the expenses, our property preventative maintenance, so, you know, it's, it's like, we're always putting the bandaid on and not getting through the problem. These larger organizations have the resources and the technology that we simply just don't have.
Well, I would, I would, I would just note, because of what we've been doing with Parsa since Mayor Robert Cedar, and then since this team has gone on board is we finally have gotten to a point where we can catch up in, in our analysis to see what actually the overall system, and now it's, correct me if I'm wrong. And that's really where the scary part is, is we really see what's out there and needs to be done in this aging system. And that's why we need to explore an option like this.
Mayor, you're correct.
Yeah.
We have, if we haven't proactive, but as Sharon mentioned, over the last four years, we spent quite too many dollars, they need to load more. Sewer repair in five places, over five hundred thousand dollars. Riddle and Adam, twice, was around five hundred thousand dollars. Last contribute with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Jackson, Jackson Adams twice with around seventy-five thousand dollars. So it just adds up. And we aren't being proactive, we are lining second street, which we did last year, helping so that we still have a whole aging system.
And our debt ceiling only allows us to go so far to raise debt, and you don't want to hit the ceiling because, well, again, it's, we don't look good financially in terms of what the, the, the Board of Finance would look at us as. And also it, it's means we're raising taxes to offset that debt. So if, if this helps, and again, the residents of Denellen will be the ones that make that decision, you have to. You have to first pay off your sewer utility debt. And then the remaining balance, you can look to pay off your general capital, which would be very important, being that we know the cost of what the fire department cost us. Uh, even with insurance, uh, so it's, um, it's something I think we have to explore at this moment in time. Uh, are there any members of the public online that would like to ask a question of Sharon? Okay, so Sharon, thank you.
Keeping you up to date. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item number four. We have three proclamations this evening. The first is recognizing March as Youth Art Month. And this will be read by, uh, Councilwoman Chrisaw Ides Lance, who is a liaison to the Denon Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission.
Whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary, middle and secondary students, including developing students. Creative problem solving and critical thinking abilities. And whereas art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order and other expressive qualities. And gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs. And whereas art programs foster self-expression and confidence in young people. Allowing them to communicate their thoughts, emotions and experiences in meaningful ways. And whereas participation in the arts has been linked to improved academic performance. Enhanced motor skills and higher levels of student engagement. And whereas the art provides. A foundation for lifelong appreciation and enjoyment, encouraging cultural enrichment and community engagement. And whereas the Borough of Denon in conjunction with the Denon Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission. Strives to provide and encourage programs that afford the public great opportunities to experience arts and culture in Denon. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Mayor Jason F. Solento and the Denon Borough Council recognize May. Twenty twenty-five. As Youth Art Month in the Borough of Denon and encourage residents to join us in celebrating the arts. And how they inspire creativity and support a diverse and inclusive community.
Thank. We're not open for public comment right now. March.
March.
Okay. I'm looking, it is.
It is.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have the great honor of having Catherine and Kalen to read a proclamation recognizing the importance of Girl Scouts to today's Girl Scouts. So. Catherine and Kalen, please join us up front. Want to tell the public what truth you're a part of?
Group six five five two eight.
Okay. Procat. Procap. I can't read it. Proclamation, recognizing the importance of Girl Scouts to, to, Girl Scouts to today's girls. Whereas March twelfth, twenty twenty-five marks the one hundred and thirteenth anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA. The largest and most impactful leadership pro- program for girls in the world and. Whereas March ninth to fifteenth, twenty twenty-five is National Girl Scout Week and. Whereas since their beginnings, Girl Scouts has been emphasized public service and civic. Engagement ha- and has fostered a sense of community in girls. And whereas Girl Scouts work the, to champion the ambitions, culture. And talent and develop the skills of, of girls to confidently persuade their passions. And make the, make the world a better place. And whereas Girl Scouts engages girls of all grade levels and civics programming. That deepens their understandings of democracy and government. Prepares them for a lifetime of civic engagement and motivates them to take action on issues that are important to them. And. Whereas Girl Scouts offer. Girls twenty-one century programming in a science, technology, engineering and math. The outdoor entrepreneurship. And beyond helping girls develop. And valuable life skills and whereas. Girl Scouts Heart of New Jersey serves over two.
Twelve, twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand girls in their council across central Jersey. Including girls and adults volunteer in Denon. Now therefore it will be. Proclaim that, that Mayor Jason F. Solento and the Denon. Borough Council committed the Girl Scout. Movement and the Heart of New Jersey Council for, for. Providing Girl Scouts with a safe place, inclusive, all girls, all girls face where all. Wait, where. Where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities.
Good job. Opposition provided both. How about that? Sound good? You want to hold it? Very good. Thank you for your service. Great job. Yes, the proclamation is all for you too. Official and everything. Next up is the reading of a proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month. And this will be read aloud by all three of our, uh, female council members. So however they decide to divide it up.
Yeah.
Proclamation in honor of Women's History Month. Whereas throughout history, women have made significant contributions to the growth and strength of our borough, county, state, nation. And the world in countless ways. And whereas. The twenty twenty-five Women's History Month theme established by the National Women's History Alliance is titled Moving Forward Together. Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. The theme celebrates the powerful influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship and leadership and.
Whereas through leadership, innovation and ingenuity, generations of women have made significant contributions in science, medicine, technology, business, politics, entrepreneurship, labor. And arts and culture. And whereas women have been leaders in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity. And in the abolitionist emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights and peace movements. Have created a more fair and just society for all and.
Whereas whether serving in elected positions across America, leading groundbreaking civil rights movements. Venturing into unknown frontiers or programming revolutionary technologies, generations of women opened new doors. And had a profound and positive impact on our community. Now for, therefore be it proclaimed that Mayor Jason F. Solento and the Denon Borough Council recognize. March twenty twenty-five as Women's History Month in the Borough of Denon. And encourage residents to join us in celebrating the many ways women, past and present, have shaped the world.
Very nice. Thank you, Councilman. Catherine and Kalen, it might be you up here one day, right? Something to look forward to. Stay civic minded. Item number five on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes from our regular meeting, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Move it, Rios.
Second. Alright, segment. Um, any comments, uh, edits or reductions as the meeting minutes currently stand? Without hearing any, take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Yes.
And Mister Sigmund?
Yes. Item number six on the agenda is introduction of ordinances. Uh, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. An ordinance to amend and supplement the general legislation of the Borough of Denon, chapter two zero two, public parking sections eighteen, handicap parking. Uh, this is related to Saint Nicholas requesting a, a handicap parking space in front of their, uh, church. Ladies, uh, in terms of an introduced ordinance, if you want to know sit, uh, how we operate here, an introduced ordinance only gets a reading. Here, it's introduced, we don't discuss it. And then at the next council meeting, March.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, if you care to join us, uh, there's a public hearing and adoption, potential adoption. So, uh, we will motion in second on this. And then, uh, we will take a roll call directly. So, sound good? Okay. Can I have a motion in second, please? Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Yes.
And Mister Sigmund?
Yes. Thank you. Item number seven on the agenda is the adoption of ordinances. We have two this evening. We have twenty twenty-five dash zero six. An ordinance of the Borough of Denon, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending part two, general legislation. Chapter two seventy-five trees and twenty twenty-five dash zero seven ordinance. Authorizing acceptance of the dedication of sewer improvements constructed in the connection with the redevelopment, commonly known as the Denon Station on a portion of block eighty-five, lots of one point zero one and. One point zero two and elsewhere with the borough. So this would be the point in which we introduce today, twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. And so this is representative in like two weeks, we would. Publicly hear and adopt that one. So this is what we're hearing. You'll hear us, uh, discuss this one. We'll open up to the public first. Mayor and council will discuss it after we hear public comment. And then we'll take a roll call if we don't make any amendments and move it to another meeting. So. Um, can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty-five dash zero six?
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund. Okay, at this moment in time, we'll open the floor to the public solely for the ordinance of, purpose of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six. We ask the publicly state their name and address to this ordinance. Without hearing comments or questions, uh, can we open the floor to mayor and council for any discussion?
Um, I do have just a question, comment, um, with the replacement of trees. Believe that's section C, where it says be monitored and maintained, um, by the applicant for applicant. For a period of two years to ensure their survival. Um, it's just been my observation that there have been several trees planted around town. I'm not sure because I'm not a tree specialist, but it doesn't look like they're thriving. So, um, in that case, um, what are some of the things that are typically done?
If it's a, you're saying I replace shade tree like a brand new shade tree?
Right.
Um. That is a very good question. I'm assuming if the tree is dead, it goes on to a, uh, tree removal list, which, uh, we have very lengthy list. Um, so I'm sure that's the process. Um, are you talking maybe perhaps enforcement on the resident who's not caring for it?
I'm not sure if it's so much enforcement, but I'm not sure if the resident is actually, residents would actually be aware of this and. I'm not sure if they would know that the tree should be or could be removed, um, if it wasn't thriving. So I'm just wondering if there's. Any type of follow-up by the Shade Tree Commission to go around and see if those trees that they have planted.
I know they do. I can tell you, commission members can, uh, Mister Rios, I've seen out many a times, he goes out and waters them.
Just going to say that I've gone as a family, uh, to go out on water and to mulch and to bag them. So we do try to maintain them.
Okay, even the ones on, on residential properties?
Those are the ones that we maintain, yes.
Okay.
Generally, they're between curb and sidewalk. They're within the easement, so we don't plant anything beyond easement. So officials such as Shade Tree Commission have right to care for tree. Um, I know the Shade Tree Commission sends a notice on how to care for trees, I believe. Um, and, um, if, if the notice isn't there about removal, should it die? Maybe we should add it. Who is the liaison for the Shade Tree Commission? Cole, can you just officially find that out and report back? Okay.
And normally if a shade tree does die.
And.
Normally not a big tree.
And once it's been removed, does it get replaced or just removed?
Every tree that gets removed gets put back on to, and we tell the resident that makes a request. If it's within our easement, it gets removed, it's going to be replaced with a shade tree.
Thank you.
Any other? Yeah, I have one. I guess we might have a conflict. The twenty-seven, two seventy-five dash thirteen enforcement. Puts enforcement under the construction office.
The. The, uh, the shade tree. Mission can only enforce the, uh, trees that are within the public right of way. Uh, the other options or, uh, the, uh, tree replacement that's on private property. Uh, it's, uh, would be under, uh, construction office, uh. This was the only other, uh, borough office that could oversee. That, that's why there's the distinction between.
So legally standing, you feel that it's, it's good?
Uh, yeah, it has to be. The Shade Tree Commission, uh, has limited powers by statute and they are only authorized to enforce as to. Uh, trees within the public right of way. So there has to be the, the private trees and have to be a borough. Uh, department that would oversee and enforce that. And the permitting process goes through the constructional office and co-officials.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Without hearing any, can, can we take a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance? Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Yes.
And Mister Sigmund?
Yes. Can I have a motion in second on twenty twenty-five dash zero seven?
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund. We'll open the floor to the public solely on twenty twenty-five dash zero seven. We just ask that you state your name and address, please. Without hearing any, we'll close the portion of, uh, that discussion to the public and open the floor to mayor and council. Without hearing any, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Yes.
And Mister Sigmund?
Yes. Okay, item number eight on the agenda is resolutions. Uh, Mrs. Stats, if you can read them out for mayor and council, and it allows the opportunity to ask questions or have a discussion on them before we vote.
Sure. Resolution number one nineteen is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Yes.
And Mister Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one twenty is to appoint Russell Miller as a fire department member.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
I'm staying to my position on the fire department.
Mister Scott?
Stay in position with the fire department.
And Mister Sigmund?
Yes. Thank you to Mister Miller for stepping forward to volunteer. Is he here this evening? Nope. Thank you for your service and to all the volunteer firefighters.
Resolution one twenty-one is authorizing the Borough of Denon to make a payment for insurance on behalf of the rescue squad to Bonikowski facility.
Move it, Rios?
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mister Scott?
Yes.
And Mister Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-two is to award a contract to M R C for additional playground equipment at Moorcraft Park. Move it, Rios?
Second, Sigmund, and I do have a question. Well, Miss Cedar is going to say a few things first. That's okay. Maybe she can address your questions.
Hello, um, so we are adding an additional playground to Moorcraft Park over on First Street. Hello. Um, so we are adding an additional playground to Morecraft Park over on First Street. Um, it's an additional playground, um, geared towards the younger population ages zero five. Um, the, it's gonna be a playground and a climber set that, um, will match the color scheme that's currently there on that playground. And then the funding is gonna, um, will come from the CDVG and then the five twenty-six Metro, uh, Community Benefits Project. So that will cover the cost of, um, the playground, the climber and the installation, and then whatever, whatever's left will cover, um, the mulch and the rolling tires and making it beautiful.
So mainly this is all through grants and our negotiation with the redeveloper to support the park. So note the taxpayer dollars.
Correct.
Beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, council members, questions?
Uh, yes, you did answer one question, uh, that I had about the age group for it, uh, and where will it be located?
So if you're looking at the park swings, it's gonna be in the back corner behind the playground where we decided. There's a big empty space.
Where the, uh, zip line thing used to be?
Yeah, so it's behind the basketball courts over to the right behind the existing playground set. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Councilmember Lance, your question?
Uh, I mean, kids are denying?
I do.
I could resend them, too. Yep.
The Recreation Commission approved this?
Yeah, the Commission approved it at the October meeting. We were just waiting for the county funds to. Bring it to. Um, I do have the pictures. You want me to share them now? Do you want to share them?
What, you can hold it up?
Yeah, and I could send them in the email.
Top secret information. So this is the playground. Again, it's geared towards like Tyler's younger kids. What's there is a little weird, and then this is the climber. So these colors won't be the colors. I mean, like I said, it will match what we have.
Want to shut the public?
Oh, please, sorry guys.
And the color scheme will match what's currently there?
Yeah.
The blue, was it blue and white?
Great.
Good work, Ms. Cedar.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a roll call. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
I'm sorry, I do have another question. Is that okay?
Yeah, we'll just have to redo the roll call.
Okay. Um, I have not visited the park, so I don't know what the condition of the existing equipment is, but, um, has the existing equipment been, um, inspected so that if there are any repairs that need to be done, would that be covered through the grant?
It's about two years old.
Okay.
Yeah, so in, in, once Metro five twenty-six went up as part of our redevelopment agreement, uh, we negotiated that they provide fifty-five thousand dollars to a park improvement, and the park closest to that project is Morecraft Park. So upfront, they gave us twenty-seven thousand and change. Twenty-seven, five, that assisted in the funding of the structure that's currently there. And then this, uh, along with grants and everything is, uh, finishing off the project with these pieces. Yep.
Okay, I mean, it does, you would assume that it's only two years old and that it wouldn't need any maintenance, but children can sometimes be rough. And so, just wondering if any inspection has been done.
The, um, the playground gets inspected every year, yearly, one a year.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't normally open to the public during resolutions, but I think we'll make an exception for you.
The great question. It's something that we're. The whole playground, the new playground that we put in to have, um, stuff with, you know, painting devices. And it was still a bit more, or more bad.
You know.
That is a great question. And it's why you're a Girl Scout, right? Great question. Okay. Roll call?
Okay. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-three is to transfer appropriation reserves for the twenty twenty-four operating account.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-four is to authorize CME associates to prepare the fiscal year twenty twenty-four recycling tonnage grant application.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Um, this grant is always post the year in which, uh, it's been done. So, Mr. Miller, do you wanna, you wanna touch, just so council's aware of this in public, what this is? Tonnage grant.
The tonnage grant. Yeah, each, each year, sorry.
Sorry.
Didn't hear before. Uh, each, each year, um, CME does a recycle, I told you this, man.
Thank you.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-five is to approve an amusement license for Uncle Luigi's.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
What are they putting in?
It's like a clog here. They, we sent them out, um, in December, but they were late getting back to us. So that's why they're the only one on this license.
Thank you.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-six is authorizing the borough to solicit bids for the sale of the borough's water and wastewater systems.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-seven is to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Environmental Protection regarding the Blue Acres Program.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
So if I could speak to this really quick, uh, the Blue Acres Program is a funding source to buy out properties that are near, uh, water, uh, that can severely damage or actually cause death to anybody in the near area. And so, there are several properties along the Greenbrook, specifically on the Mount Few Terrace, North Washington Avenue side, that have qualified and they've gone through the necessary paperwork over the last several years for Blue Acres. Um, this has been a long effort to ensure that these people get what I believe they rightfully deserve, uh, so not to live through another storm the way they've had to live. Um, because the issue was is the, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers is coming through with the, the Greenbrook Flood Control, uh, project. So, uh, the argument was that FEMA was gonna buy them out, and so they could wait till that, and we made the case back to them that no, they can't wait for that. Use Blue Acres and get them out now because another year or two can mean that someone's life. So, um, I applaud everybody who has been a part of these efforts to ensure that these people get value for their homes, and they can stop living through the nightmare that they've been living through these past several years. Um, so this is the agreement as part of that. Um, as part of the effort, we will have to work with Blue Acres to maintain the property after they've been demolished, and it's almost returned to like a, almost like a field. So, um, but I think we can do that, knowing that, uh, that there's no value on someone, uh, there, there's, how do I word that? There's no value on someone's life? You can't put a value on someone's life. Thank you. I don't want to say it the wrong way, but I think people know what I mean. Um, so that's what this is. I want to thank Mr. Robertson for helping get this memorandum going, and Mr. Miller, and, uh, everybody that's been associated to the efforts. I think this will give, uh, great relief to some families that have been living and suffering through this. I mean, how many times with the fire department and, uh, OEM have we had to go and rescue several of these people? Um, so, um, this is a part of the process to make sure that they get out of their situation. So that's what this is. Anything else, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'll take a roll call. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-eight is authorizing the release of the remaining performance guarantee to Brunder Redevelopment Partners and accepting the two-year sewer improvements maintenance guarantee.
Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigmund.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one twenty-nine is authorizing payment to Brunder Redevelopment Partners of the borough's share of construction costs for public improvements to the Washington Sewer Interceptor.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one thirty is to amend resolution from February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, number ninety-nine, appointing CGPNH as administrative agent for the borough's affordable housing program.
Move it, Rios. Second, Rios.
Uh, have a question?
Sure.
Um, so this shows a difference of eighty-seven hundred, uh, from the original proposal, and just, uh, wondering what was the discrepancy in the original proposal?
Sure. The original not to exceed was fifteen thousand three hundred, and I went back, um, and asked them what was the difference between the previous year, and they said that they made a mistake in our proposal. So, we had to change it to amend it to twenty-four thousand instead of fifteen thousand three hundred. So it was a mistake on their end. So we have to amend the resolution of the do not to, uh, exceed them out.
Right, so what was the mistake on their end?
Oh, no, it was just the number.
It was just the number?
Just the number. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
It's right here, fifteen thousand three hundred?
Yep, that was the original number in the proposal, and then I asked them the question, and they went back and said it was supposed to be twenty-four thousand instead. From the prior year. The same contract.
It doesn't mean we're spending twenty-four thousand.
No, not to exceed.
The amount in which.
Yeah, I don't think we even got to anywhere close to that number last year. Is there any other questions? Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one thirty-one is to approve street corner fundraising by the Dunellen, Dunellen American Legion Post one one nine.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution one thirty-two is to approve a townwide garage sale by Boy Scout Troop one twenty-nine.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Rios.
Uh, Mr. Miller, uh, not that it's related to this, but it brings up to mind, um, we're, we're still gonna do the, in September, we have a Free Rubbish Day, but in June, after the garage, national, the town wide national garage sale. Townwide garage sale. We're all in it together. Uh, then the townwide garage, yeah, it's a lot of, townwide garage sale. Um, we'll still offer that service, but that one's a paid gig.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Correct. Mrs. Albertson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Resolution number one thirty-three is to authorize a tax overpayment refund for seventy-two depot way.
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number nine, council reports, council member, uh, Albertson.
Hey, the fire department responded to thirty calls for service in February. Total called for twenty twenty-five was sixty-three. Incident types, fire was two, false alarm was eight, service call five, hazmat five, good intent eight, PMS two, total month, monthly total thirty. The fire department attended several events and has held several drills during February. On February tenth, they held monthly, monthly officers meeting, and they also had a work, monthly work drill that day. On the tenth and twenty-third, they held monthly instruction drills for right-to-know and bloodborne pathogens. On the twenty-sixth, they held their monthly fire company meeting. We're happy to see a number of residents joining the department in the past few months. The new members will be attending fire school in the upcoming months. The fire department is still looking for new members to join. Um, membership is open to anyone sixteen to eighteen as a junior member, and full members open to anyone over eighteen. Visit our website at www.dunellenfd.com or email joinfd@dunellenfd.com for more information. Dunellen Downtown, Downtown Dunellen Management Organization. The past weekend, two new businesses celebrated their grand opening. Welcome to Xavier Tovar and his family, owners of luxuries bath and kitchen, and to Annette and Ernie of the Wick Studio. Stop by and get to know the newest members of our downtown merchants. The Friends of the Dunellen Public Library, uh, you can help them solve the mystery of the gangster, the death of a gangster on March twenty-second from seven to nine thirty PM at the George W. Hodglick Firehouse. Reservations are required. Dinner is included. Seventy dollars for individuals, a hundred and thirty for a couple. Table of ten, six twenty-five. On March twenty-fourth at six thirty PM, stop by the library for George and Martha Washington, a love story. This live performance is free to the public, and I bet the scouts would enjoy going to see that. Proceeds from Friends fundraising events help to provide programs such as this, as well as museum passes, summer reading program events, and prizes, and so much more. Follow the Friends on Facebook and Instagram. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Rios.
Yes, Buildings and Grounds Report. The division of office space in the multipurpose office is underway as part of an ongoing departmental relocation. TK one will also be conducting internet wiring, maintenance in the multipurpose office. Uh, Parsa Report. Parsa's staff and business administrator Alex Miller recently reviewed the process of video inspection for sewer mains in coordination with uh, Borough's Road Projects. Five years ago, Marison Salento initiated a policy requiring Parsa to inspect its sewer mains before any road project commenced. This proactive approach aims to identify potential sewer issues early, as demonstrated during the planning phase of the Klein Place project, where a potential, potentially significant issue was identified and addressed. Additionally, it was agreed upon that the completion of each road project, Parsa will conduct a final review, sorry, excuse me, a final video inspection of the sewer main. This ensures that no damage occurs during the work performed by contractors or utility companies, providing an added layer of oversight and protection for our infrastructure. Uh, Dunellen Public Library, visit our Facebook page and website to explore more exciting programs for all ages. Join us for Saturday Storytime with Ms. Mackey, dive into an afternoon of Dungeons and Dragons, or take part in our teen ESL sessions. There's something for everyone. And the Board of Ed, the next Board of Ed meeting will be held on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five at seven PM.
That's it? I saw Chief Best's smile during Dungeons and Dragons. I wonder if he'll be joining.
It's all ages.
Councilwoman Lance?
Yes, um, the Rec Department, uh, the winter basketball season has come to an end. A special thank you to Kate Ruskuski, Austin Clark, and all our amazing recreation coaches and volunteer parents. Your dedication and hard work have truly made this program a success. We can't wait to hit the courts again next year. Registration for all spring youth sports is now open, including baseball, softball, tennis, and open soccer. Spring Open Soccer is a free program exclusively for Dunellen residents. To determine the number of children we can accommodate, the Recreation Department needs support from volunteer coaches. Please note that the registration deadline for baseball and softball is next Monday, March tenth. If your child is interested and you have the ability, we encourage you to participate. If you would like to volunteer as a coach, please reach out to Recreation Program Coordinator Kelly Cedar at kcedar@dunellenborough.com. And just a friendly reminder that the registration deadline for Hometown Hero banners has been extended and is now March tenth. These banners will be hung up in the downtown area just before Memorial Day and will stay. These banners will be hung up in the downtown area just before Memorial Day and will stay up through Veterans Day and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Council President Sigmund? Uh yes, uh I also just want to do my, I guess, annual uh plug for coaches for the Rec Department. You don't have to be a a great athlete to be a great role model, uh it's not only fun for the kids, but as a coach, we also have uh a great time, so if you can, uh please join as a coach. Um, I also uh want to thank the Danellen Rescue Squad and Danellen Police Department for responding to emergency at our home this past week, uh professionalism you guys show is uh amazing, I really appreciate everything you do for this town. Excuse me, that's it. I'm okay. Uh, good? Okay, thank you. Councilman uh Scott?
For DPW, they routinely clean the downtown area and the borough parks and properties, continue to fill potholes in various streets, continuing to inspect and clean out the catch bases throughout the borough, worked on walling off the office space in the multipurpose office. They walk the brooks and streams to clear debris as needed, cleared the catch basin lids throughout the borough and cleared the bur- the debris from the trash trap. Uh they cleared leaves and debris from the downtown sidewalks after the heavy winds of the past weekend.
Thank you.
And most importantly, they began ballfield prep, which has begun for the ballfields and prep for the spring season. Uh the DPW Mechanic Division serviced the police fleet as they're due for maintenance and repla- repairing the fleet as they break down or uh or issues arise. Service the DPW fleet vehicles as they come due for maintenance and repair the vehicles as issues or breakdowns arise. Clean and maintain the spreader units for the inclement weather, hopefully we put them away soon. Clean and maintain the plows to ensure they're ready for inclement weather and repair the refu- refuse truck brake system and top dog ball fluids. And a reminder, curb, curbside branch pickup takes place in March and April after the winds, I'm sure there's a lot. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, um I just wanna note to again this past Saturday uh members of the Danellen Downtown Management Organization, the Borough Council, and I had the great honor of welcoming two new businesses to our downtown uh luxury kitchen and bath located one eighteen North Washington Avenue. Uh they celebrated their grand opening, as was noted, uh Xavier and his entire family uh were there and they offer high-quality kitchen and bathroom renovations, uh they're also Danellen residents, which is always nice to see residents opening businesses on the main street. Uh we then attended the Wick Studio located right, located right across street at six, three sixty-two North Avenue. Um they offer unique hands-on custom hand candle making experiences perfect, perfect for birthday parties, corporate gatherings or a relaxing night out. Um so they have a variety of scents and containers to create a candle that is unique to you. And so that the owners are Annette and Ernest and they're just Biscataway residents, so it's nice that two local people uh opened up uh two businesses, quality businesses, so welcome to Danellen. Uh Middlesex County Recycling uh through the M C I A has recently informed the borough that within the next few months, um the recycling services will be switched over to an automatic side load or known A S L. So this is actually a pretty exciting service with a requirement that the vendor must include supplying a new commercial-grade ninety-five gallon wheel tote delivered to each home. A S L will provide more capacity and more effortless container movement for the homeowner as well as a cleaner streets from the enclosed containers, so basically they'll drive up, they'll put the thing in, they'll tip it over and it'll go right back down instead of all this corp cardboard just uh uh you know, flying all over the place. So um I do wanna give a shout out to Mister Miller, this is something that we were discussing last year and he kept at it at the county's ears, I I don't know if they moved because you we kept hounding them, but at the end of the day, I'll throw some street cred to Mister Miller, how about that? So, thank you. Yeah, it was a lot of that, cuz he's a resident of Greenbrook and they have this quality service by Somerset County uh at the other zero eight eight one two, so uh if you had anything to do with it, thank you for pressing them. You and me both. Yeah. Um. Curbside branch and tree limb collection, curbside collection of branches and tree limbs occurs in March and April. Make sure to stack branches and tree limbs and bundles, limbs shall be no more than six inches in diameter and four feet in length. Residents may also bring branches and tree limbs to the DBW recycling yard year round. Some other good news, um Verizon files update, yes, we're getting a third provider. Uh we spoke with Verizon Government Affairs Office, following their discussion, uh Government Affairs contacted Verizon Legal Team to reach out to uh Alex Miller and our borough attorney to establish a franchise agreement, which will be presented to the mayor and council in the near future, so a lot of uh great exciting things happening and uh competition's a good thing, I think we're already seeing that at work between Optima and Comcast now. Throw a third in and let's see what happens. Uh New Jersey American Water has recently been in communication with our business administrator Alex Miller about continuing the water main replacement in the borough this year. Uh they will start with Prospect Avenue from Grove Street to Center Street with Whittier Ave from New Market to Center Street, which is expected to start this week. This project will include all the same processes as projects in the past. Um they will remove and replace the water mains, um install new um new water services from the main to each residential water box and install new fire hydrants. The project will conclude with the milling and paving of two inches of asphalt top on each street. And of course, we will look at what enhanced striping we can do um on our end to each road. Uh note, Prospect Avenue will be striped the way it is now after the street is paved, including all rumble strips and painted speed limit and bicycle markings. Excuse me. CME Associates Engineering Report, uh the wavefinding signage uh for the downtown, they received review comments from the N J D O T, so the highway occupancy permit application has also been submitted. CME is preparing a response to the D O T comments, project to be bid when authorized by the D O T. Klein Place corrective work will can be completed when the weather permits and should be done within the next month or so. Uh Washington Avenue Street Lighting, a pre-construction meeting is scheduled for this week. Uh the second street phase one, a pre-construction meeting is scheduled for this week. Uh the railroad Ave, the railroad Culvert, not Road Ave, the railroad Culvert along South Avenue and North Ave Extension um and Pulaski, the borough met with representatives of the Army Corps and D E P to discuss the status of their improvements and whether they have improved tailwater conditions in Avonica Brook. Uh CME shared our analysis with the Army Corps and is coordinating the analysis with them. CME has also contacted the I Bank to discuss the next steps for financing the project, so every week, every month, we get closer to this uh twenty-plus year project getting completed. Um, the strip joint, six uh six thirty-five Boundbrook Road, CME received a bid, received bidder questions late last week and will need to issue an addendum to the uh to respond to them. Unfortunately, CME must move the bid date back to provide ample time between the addendum and the I D per the local public contracts law. So it was initially scheduled for March sixth and it will have to be moved back due to this matter. And we will report back to council and keep the rescue squad in the loop as that progresses. So that is it for me tonight for my report. Next on the agenda is um we have item number ten, council discussion, there's nothing on the agenda right now. Uh item number eleven is Department Head Reports.
And no report, Mayor.
Okay, clerk? I T?
No report, Mayor.
Administration, DPW?
Yeah, uh Mayor, so today I met with the uh school, um the um
Could you put your mic on, Ryan, just so it can be picked up? Thank you.
So today I met with the school, uh the uh Early Child uh Council uh was requesting me to come to their meeting cuz of, you know, their main concern was traffic, school traffic a- and such, so uh so the 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 committee was uh teachers and some uh parents that, you know, that that are part of this committee. It's part of the uh early hu- uh childhood development uh program that they have. And the in the in the concern again wa- was about traffic and and some of the issues that they were discussing, I totally understand. And and you know, one of the response, two of the things I responded back to the school was uh did they look, does, will the school be willing to look into an engineer designing a traffic around the school because the school does have property uh that has to an access road on Wall Street where they could split the traffic around the school going back to Wall Street. One, that's one thing that I did mention to them. The other thing is the U-shaped area in front of the school is closed off. And I was wondering, I I asked why, why is it closed off, why don't students get dropped off there and a car bunch of fifteen or twenty cars at a time, bring them in, drop off, pull out? So it was just something that I brought their attention because they're asking us how we can help and, you know, stagger school time, I don't know, I just I threw three options at them if they could look into it because not much more the borough could do, you know, you can put more police out there, but it's not.
That's upset people too, it's it's a no-win situation.
Yeah, so I I just threw those.
Forward, so I know.
I threw those options at them and it's just, you know, ask if they have looked into it because they, there's two possibilities. Reroute the traffic around the school, so you have two acts, two uh, two ways out of there instead of everything all down Wall Street. Or if they could work some kind of drop-off system in front of the school. And I and I also mentioned how they gone to other schools, cuz I live two blocks away from an elementary school in Greenbrook and it was a disaster too. And they changed their drop-off system and now it's like.
What's the system? Not that we're making the decisions.
No, well, the system that, the system that they use is basically a uh if it's a drop-off uh or pickup, the the parent would pick, would pull up and there'd be somebody with a walkie-talkie and on the window, they'd have the 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 student's name and they would call in and somebody would walk the students out by time they, the car pulled up there and it just I was honestly surprised because it was horrible before and and they changed and I and I and I asked the school, you know, asked if they have looked into different options, so I just wanted let you, let the, let you know that that this was disgusting and took place.
Yeah, I know this is a conversation the Mayor's Traffic Pedestrian Safety Task Force keeps getting asked by the school district too. And we wanna be a partner and of course, you know, we're one town, um is there gonna be another meeting?
I I uh my my feeling is that this 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 commit- committee will probably pres- present it to the school, I hope they do.
Okay.
And the teachers were interested and even some of the teachers saying one of the teachers, I forgot her name, was worked at a summer camp and in like with with the U shape in the front. She said in our summer camp, they would do that. Cars would pull up, they'd unload twelve, fifteen cars at a time. Then all the cars would pull out and it and it takes cooperation with the parents, parents gotta be ready to drop the kids out off instead of like all sudden like the last minute things that 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 take place and drags it all back, so.
Okay, well, if there's a future meeting, I would, if we can get also alongside you, a member from the Mayor's Traffic Pedestrian Safety Task Force and I would hope a a member of the Police Department, the chief would send somebody over with you, somebody maybe from the Traffic Division or what is administrators.
I would probably think that that would probably be the next thing is more with the school administration. And then I can reach out to them again because I know there was, there was conversation a while back and then it just died off.
Okay, keep us all posted cuz it.
For sure. Uh the other thing, uh following up from the Blue Acres, um um I know when I, in Greenbrook, when they they uh through the Blue Acres Project, uh the fire department has used the houses for training. So what I can do is reach out to them and see if we can do something similar, so the fire department could use the houses for training before they come in and them, you know, demo it, so I'll keep you in contact on that.
Okay, Recreation?
No.
No?
No, sorry.
Okay, thank you. O E M?
Yes, it's exactly, I, um, O E M is continue to work with the the Police Department uh school officials, Eric Martin, on the uh school reunification, which is a top issue for our town. Uh we're looking at staging areas where we're gonna relocate the kids, but this is for active threat situations. So we're continuing to work on that, we meet monthly, tactical meeting on Wednesday. Uh one of the things that I'd like to mention is that um we actually need uh to develop a whole cadre of volunteers, either CERT volunteers or shelter uh staff volunteers. That's one of the things that concerns me, uh we do have a tentative agreement, which we view by our uh attorney uh regarding uh a a shelter agreement with the school. Uh so we just gotta push that and but we're gonna need a shelter staff. Now, I'm gonna be in conversation with the American Red Cross, um and they will help us assist us with a shelter staff, but you know, it's uh that may not be possible if we have a a uh a statewide emergency, so uh working on that, um. In the event in terms of trying to uh, one of my thought processes is that uh we we get some volunteers that wanna do something in short term. We bring in these volunteers to learn about shelter operations and you send them away. And then once they're, while you bring them back, so these are for people that don't wanna be continuously involved in a program like CERT. So that's one of the, one of the things that we've been thinking about. The other thing in terms of CERT, um is that the University of Utah has come up with a hybrid program. Um and what that involves basically is uh it's like twelve hours of virtual training, free CERT virtual training. Uh and then there's sixteen hours of on-hands, uh. You know, we always talk about CERT training is for everybody. You don't have to become part of CERT team, but CERT, become part of CERT team means additional training. But CERT training is for everybody and you know what? We have a, if we have a borough-wide disaster, all hands are need to be on deck. And so we really need to train as many citizens as we possibly can to be the help uh until help arrives. You know, everybody thinks that the police or the fire or EMS is gonna be there for you, but they may not be, they may be dealing with some other priorities and so guess what? If we could teach you some basic skills that you could help your family, your friends, your neighbors out more milk or better, so uh I, that's gonna be appearing in an article tomorrow, this hybrid program. Uh Mister Sigmund has signed up as one of the people, I encourage, uh you know, all our employees or even our council, cuz you could take this, the virtual part of this online at your leisure. Uh and so, uh and to mention another activity that's gonna happen pretty soon is that they're gonna have disaster bill uh at the Fire Academy. CERT uh members from all over the state are 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 gonna converge at the firehouse. Uh and they're gonna actually have a disaster where they're gonna be access, like a full-scale exercise where CERT members who are trained will, uh you know, will have the opportunity to put those skills um to use. So that's gonna be April twenty-ninth, it's gonna really be a big deal. Uh and.
That'll be at our firehouse?
Okay.
You said that's our.
At our um, at the Fire Academy.
Okay.
CERT, yeah, so that's gonna really be a big deal, so uh more to come on that. So again, you know, look at the article tomorrow in the Danellen, well, I should add tomorrow, but when the Danellen Report comes out, we talked about that virtual program and I'm encouraging council members to think about taking that, taking that course. Again, some basic survival skills if we have a disaster.
Have you thought about sending that out to the Mi- American Legion, B F W, Knights of Columbus, some of our church organizations?
Oh yeah, we we've always tried to get the uh NGOs.
Maybe the Eagle Scouts or the Girl Scouts, at least, maybe that's the way they can get a badge too.
Well, you know, that's part of our, part of our um responsibility is to educate the the public in terms of preparedness and you yourself, Mayor, has assistance. Assistance been act endeavor by your town hall leaders, so. So we still, that's still ongoing.
Thank you. Police Department? Very nice, anything from I T?
None.
Still I T-ing, all good? Okay. Uh item number twelve on the agenda is public comments, we'll open the floor to the public who are here in the chambers and then we'll go to individuals online, we ask you, please state your name and address.
Yeah, that's the Danellen Rescue Squad, uh Rescue Squad report. Uh for the month of February, responding to thirty calls for service. Uh bringing us to sixty-seven for the year. Uh forty percent of our call line this year so far have been bulk-related emergencies. Uh it's been particularly cold. Um, we brought on three new members. This year so far, one of them being in the M T. Uh she has, hasn't started riding ships yet, but we look forward to it. On Wednesday, there will be a meeting of the Volunteer EMT Training Fund, uh, Commission at, uh, Houston Fire Training. Uh, this is this is in regards to a bill that was passed by the New Jersey State Legislature. Um, making it our training fund for volunteer EMTs available again to develop particular, you know. Uh, many rescue squads were cut out by the, by the state government pride, and they have, it's getting restored as of April first of the, but the State Department of Health isn't sure how they're gonna be mentioned. So, uh, every one of the, of the legislature, uh, would be unanimous to restore that to us. So, okay. Please pass along our thanks as well to, um, our assembly, women and our, and our staff. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members of the public that are in chambers, please state your name and address?
Dana Best, four oh one Madison, and, and, uh, this is Danellin Rescue Squad. I just want to express our heartfelt praise for Councilman Al Dandemark, who's also the liaison to the Rescue Squad, so he cannot be here too late.
Thank you for sharing that. We will make sure that message gets passed along to him, and we share in that sentiment. So thank you. Any other members of the public in chambers? Without hearing any, we'll go to the members of the public online. Please state your name and address. None? Okay, we'll do a general blanket. All members of the public, please state your name and address who wish to speak. Catherine Kaylin, how was your first council meeting? You enjoyed it? Think you'll come back? Okay. Door's always open. Okay, without further ado, we'll close item number eleven on the agenda, public comments. Item number thirteen is adjournment, resolution one thirty-four. Can I have a motion a second, please?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Lance.
Before I take a roll, our next meeting of the mayor and council will be held on Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, here in these chambers at seven P M. All in favor, say aye. Any ayes? Okay.